I'd like to call to order, excuse me.
Oh, my gosh.
The work session, October 25th, 2021. We are all present. I'd like, we have one item on the agenda tonight for the work session. I would like council to remind staff to be pausing intermittently to answer those questions. We have an item to discuss tonight to provide direction on possible smart city categories to develop framework for the Smart City Master Plan. Please introduce yourself.
Yes, Mayor, Justin Ferret, CIO for the City of Goodyear. So, thank you, Mayor, Council. It is a privilege to be here tonight to share with you and gain your input on the Smart City Master Plan that we've been working on. So, with that, I do want to start by saying that the Smart City does not necessarily mean that we need to go invest in technology. It's really more around, our view of it is, how can we leverage technology to efficiently, you know, use our resources and engage the community? And so, that's what we'll share tonight. And I do want to, you know, start by saying we're not going to be asking for specific funding or guidance on funding. It's really around input on the framework that we're proposing. So, with that, a quick look at the agenda. We'll have briefly discussed the background and history, talk about what a smart city is, review our proposed sample categories and goals, and then open it up to your input to help us build the framework as we move forward. Brief history, in 2018, G-PAC engaged cities to begin getting their feedback on the smart city initiatives. There was a council session, work session, that occurred, and through that session, there was support for establishing a smart city strategy for the city. In 2019, City of Goodyear did join the Connective, which is a smart, it's a regional smart city consortium. And in 2020, our own Dan Cotterman was selected as an officer to represent the West Valley Cities on the Connective Leadership Council. And then, here we are, in 2021, we actually have, one of our strategic plan goals is to establish a smart city master plan. So, as we look, talk about a smart city, why do cities want to be a smart city? A few reasons. It does support economic growth, as, and it supports that through innovation. As our economic development teams are out engaging businesses, the fact of having a smart city master plan really speaks to them in terms of speaking to our innovation as a city. Yes, it may be considered a buzzword, but those buzzwords are what they look for in terms of, do we have a strategy and do we have a plan? It also facilitates community engagement, as we're engaging not only our public, but also our businesses, and the tools and technologies that we leverage to do that. And then, improve services and quality of life through access and visibility to data. And then, ultimately, government efficiency through the use of technology and data, through the things that we do to help drive decisions. And just a quick review of a few of our benchmark cities and surrounding communities. There are 14 listed here, just to, just to share with you that they are focusing and talking about smart city initiatives as well, just, just so you have reference for how others in the area are focusing on this as well. And as referenced, this is goal 1.1 in our most recent strategic plan. So, one of the first items that we really would like to garner your input on is the definition of what a smart city is. And so, we've established a proposed definition, and that is, "One which utilizes partnerships, information technology, and data analytics to improve government services and enhance quality of life for residents and businesses." So, with that, I did want to go ahead and pause and open it up to council input and feedback on the proposed definition.
All right, Council, first question, any questions? Councilor Laura Towns.
I like how you have defined it. I think it encompasses what we want to make sure that we do, because the purpose to be a smart city is to help our citizens and to draw the businesses that help our citizens. So, I think that's a good definition.
Thank you.
Councilor Campbell.
Can you tell me what the Connective Leadership Council is and what value is it?
Can you all bring your microphones down here?
And what value is it to us, please?
Absolutely.
Sherry, put your microphone close, please.
So, the, the Smart City Consortium is that collective group of cities.
The 14 that you had listed, everyone's a member?
Not just, not just those 14s, there are actually other member cities in that. And the goal of the consortium is to try to drive synergy and strategy on smart cities. At that way, as, and they are all located within Arizona, but that way, we, as varying municipalities approach the strategy and the concept of a smart city, we look for opportunities to partner and, and work towards, you know, whether it's shared technologies or shared initiatives and those things. The Leadership Council is the, effectively, the governing body that kind of guides that group. And so, they're the ones that help as you look at, as the consortium looks at where they should be looking at technologies and those things, that, that Leadership Council is what helps establish those strategies. So, as a member to that consortium, we participate on calls to, whether it's discussion on initiatives, if they're interest, to, to really help drive, and really, the ultimate goal is to help facilitate this idea of smart city, because it's relatively new and you hear a lot of buzzwords around it, but what does it truly mean? And the role is to try to help refine what that means to us. And so, to the City of Goodyear, for example, what technologies do we want to invest and look at? What are technologies, say, that Scottsdale, or Tempe, or some of those others that are also members, what are they looking at? And it's really that knowledge sharing aspect as well.
Is the council going to explore grant opportunities for the cities to share in? And if not, that's just a suggestion, because if we're all going to get together and talk about it and decide who has best practices or, or what one city is doing, perhaps another city could do, if there's any possibility of any grants out there, or partnerships that the cities could do that would help us in probably doing it much faster if we were happy to do everything on our own in budgeting it.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Laura Towns.
I like the improving government service and enhancing quality of life. I'm also wondering if there, and I'm, I can't think of a phrase that fits, but something about we're also, big picture, we're aware of trends that are happening at the national state level, we're prepared, we're, we're anticipating changes that are coming in technology and how they're going to impact. I mean, it, it's more than how we do business and how we serve our customers, transportation's changing, just retail, I mean, there's just so many changes external, and, and I don't, I don't have a phrase to capture that, but I hope that I'm articulating it.
Thank you.
Yes, Brandon.
So, yeah, no, I think it looks good as well. I just want to clarify, so I go back to the previous slide, the description where the goal came down, the description came down, so that leveraging technology out of the description is that what the information technology portion is you're trying to capture in there? Or is there a different, different portion that I'm trying, that we're trying to get?
Are you, I'm, just to make sure I'm understanding you correctly, so we've, this is the definition, the next slide, we actually refer to a more specific goal. I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the description, that's where you got, that's where you created the proposed definition, is that correct? Is it the hierarchy? Or am I off? It's just the slide previous to this, the goal.
With, with the strategic plan goal, so, yes, the, the strategic plan goal is to leverage technology and analytic solutions, and that's ultimately driving the, the need for the master plan. But then, as we, is, is the city looks to the council for leadership, we want to make sure that we, what we define as a smart city, and what we define as that smart city goal, are aligned with what your, what your vision is. So, the strategic plan goal is to establish the master plan, which encompasses defining what it is, as well as the goal statement. And so, those, those will both encompass what the strategic plan goal is.
Okay, yeah, and I guess, just, I guess the only thing is, yeah, looking forward, looking, yeah, trying to be proactive, maybe put something in there as well. Yeah, just so we can be prepared and ready, because things are definitely going to be changing, and the definition of a smart city, I'm sure, might change as well. So, yeah, so, using the peers, using the, the other group that you're talking about with the, the smart city group, so something like that in there maybe as well, just so we can capture any lessons learned and move forward. I think you kind of have this with the partnership portion, so, yeah, I think you already have it all in there, I just, just want to make sure I'm trying to communicate that appropriately. All right, thank you.
Can you, Councilmember Stitt?
Thanks, Justin. Can you go back two slides, I think?
Bill, I'm trying different hearing, it's not.
Yep, one more. Okay, one more. You hadn't, I did not see it, but I know you just said it. So, if you can just slowly go through it while I'm talking, maybe I'll find it and go, oh, that's it. We had, you had talked about, go ahead and go to the, to the next one, and maybe, I think it was the slide. So, why do cities want to be a smart city? And we talk about economic growth, community engagement, improving services, and government efficiency. I, I think for, for me, regardless of what the definition is, et cetera, it's, it's how are we measuring whether this investment in time or money is worth, so how do we measure that? How do we know that we've been efficient? How do we know that we've improved in services based, based on this smart thing? So, I'm going to be the, I'm going to be the naysayer of the group that says, this is really a buzzword, because I love that. But I think there's some value, you just got to show me. So, how do we demonstrate that, I think, is, is where we're at. The definition is fine for me, because I think you're, I think it's high level enough as we move forward, but at the end of the day, we need to, we need to be able to demonstrate that this has been worth the effort. So, how do, how, how will we measure any of those things?
And may I say, that's the same question I had written down when I looked at this. Can you believe that? But, yes.
I can.
Good.
So, that was my only comment.
I'm very interested, too.
Absolutely, and, and that's the input and feedback we need. There is, as we get into the categories, there is a specific category that refers to data and how we leverage data to measure performance. And so, that's definitely a component of it, but not only that, but also how we measure the success or not of the smart city approach, so, thank you for that.
Well, you know, and I think we have to be cautious of, you know, the term data. You can, you can pile data pretty high to get it into one direction or another. So, it's really about those meaningful measurements and what, you know, how, how does it, what, what difference does it make? And, and I will use my very simplistic performance measurement example that I always use about the fire response times, that only tells us how fast we drive. If we never measure what happens at the end of that, then we haven't really talked about anything. And that's just, and that's data. So, so make the data meaningful, and then, I think we can communicate that to our public as opposed to just putting another sticker on, on a light pole or on one of our cars that say, oh, Smart City USA, let's make it meaningful.
Very good, thank you.
Councilmember Laura Towns.
I, I think to that point, I think what I would be looking for would be like when we're talking about the data as we go forward, the increase, using smart technology for traffic lights, we could tell our citizens that increased the traffic flow by X percent, reduced accidents, like one of the things they say about the self-driving cars is if it can reduce accidents by X percent, increase productivity. I think that's what you're looking for, right? Is those type of things, yeah. So, that's, I think, would be a great measurement for the different areas. Some of them might be a little fuzzier than others, but I, I think some things that we can explain to our citizens would be great.
Any other questions?
Well, I have one comment. Okay, so, all these number of cities have done some of it, and some are continuing. So, are they all addressing that they're all together? I mean, is it, is it to the point where this is perfecto, and so, everybody's running the same way? Or is there some different culture in a city or a process that they have used? And if so, do they incorporate that? Or do they not incorporate anything? We, you know, say we had everything different, and we, well, say with a 90% more than 10% is like, no, we seem to have that work well within the timing and kind of within the understanding, so.
I, I think what we've seen through our conversations is, nobody really has it figured out. There's a lot of data and a lot of different case studies and reports out there in terms of how different municipalities have leveraged the approach to smart city. I don't think, I think part of the, really, a lot of the driving force behind the Connective is to try to drive some of that synergy and, and strategies, and that's what that group is really working for and promoting. I think what we're proposing as a city is that, you know, not necessarily going out and, and buying new technology or investing in new technologies, but really, how we approach leveraging technology to be smart and what works for us at the City of Goodyear, not so much trying to compete with other cities in, in the valley.
So, after our name, we have parentheses, smart city?
We can.
Is that, is that going to advance us?
Like I said, I think part of it is, to, to Councilmember Stitt's comment, smart cities is more of a buzzword nowadays, and, but they, I think, businesses and citizens do look to us to say, so what are you doing in those regards? And I think establishing a master plan would help support that strategy, just to essentially define what our approach is and how we are supporting the smart city strategy.
Thank you. Any other questions? And you go ahead and go on, I think.
Okay, very good. So, the next slide is actually referring to a proposed goal statement. So, the first was to establish a definition of what a smart city for Goodyear looks like. So, let's dig into a proposed goal statement, and that's to create a flexible master plan that recommends smart technology projects and highlights initiatives that will improve departments' capabilities to achieve operational goals and the city's ability to improve service and engage residents. Now, again, I do want to pause before I open it up to council input, but the, the goal here is we are not recommending, you know, fiscal support for specific initiatives or projects. It's really establishing the master plan that would work in conjunction as new CIP or supplemental projects are suggested. We leverage the master plan to look for alignment and strategy. So, with that, I will turn it open, turn it over to council for input.
Questions?
Again, I'm super, I'm going to be supportive, but what I don't understand is, what is the difference between a smart technology project and a technology project?
That's, that's a valid question. A technology, and it's really, I believe, comes down to the data aspect, is really a core of it. You can implement a technology to, you know, to help or gain efficiency, but you can, if you implement a technology, and then through the use of data, you identify or realize value through that technology, you're being smarter with that technology versus just implementing a technology to implement a technology. So, really, that's, that's where I would somewhat differentiate, which would, between just implementing a technology versus a smart technology.
So, if, and I'm somewhat tracking that, and I'm trying to use an example in my, in my own head about the online plan reviews, for example, that's a very technological change for us that sounds smart, but if no data comes from it, then it isn't smart. Is that?
That's, that's a fair statement.
Kind of where I'm at, oversimplified probably, but, so, should there be something in this, either in the master plan, you can tell me it belongs in there, or whether it should be in the actual statement that talks about providing this data to make better decisions? I mean, should that be somewhere here?
I, I do believe it should, and it is in one, like, as I mentioned, it is in one of the, the categories, is specific around data and leveraging data.
Okay, I, I, I'm done making my point, thank you.
Not 100%, but closer. Yeah, okay, all right. Next, any other questions? Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. So, referencing those categories, we do have seven proposed categories. We will start with a, this approach to smart public safety, and that's leveraging smart technology to improve safety and emergency preparedness. A few examples of, of tech, smart technologies that may fall under this category would be ensuring reliable communications, you know, in the field, whether it be PD or fire, ensuring that we've got consistent, strong communications with them regardless of where they're located. Another, a common example that you see and hear about are gunshot detection sensors, speech recognition solutions, ABL for PD, and community policing technologies. So, these are just a few examples to, to kind of maybe start you thinking about what might fall under a smart public safety category.
Anybody have a question on that? I do. So, what's a gun, gunshot technician's sensors?
Great question. So, those are, those are sensors that are located in, most commonly, you see them in, spread out across municipalities, whether it be in public park locations or whatnot. And they're actually sensors that can detect by sound the unique detection of a gunshot, and it can notify when they hear that, and you can actually triangulate that, so you can identify that there was a gunshot, and you can triangulate to a degree where that gunshot occurred at, so you can notify authorities. There are multiple sensors and technologies, that was just one example, just to, for conversation.
Is that a known term in these studies on this?
That one, when you look at smart cities technologies, that one has been out there for a few years.
Thank you. Any other questions before I continue? Brandon?
How would you use it for community policing?
So, community policing, it does also fall into community engagement, one of the other categories. Some of these are technologies that may support both categories, but it's engagement, it's leveraging technologies that you're, you're engaging the public with a specific focus on public safety. So, rather than a digital communications engagement perspective, it is a public safety-focused community policing effort.
Are we set?
The next category is around mobility, so smart technologies for safer and efficient travel. I know that there's, there have been many conversations in regards to intelligent transportation systems, a traffic flow, you know, smart traffic signals, video surveillance analytics is a component of that, also digital information kiosks and wayfinding technologies, especially as we consider going into, you know, opening new facilities in parks with digital wayfinding technologies, you know, you can take those technologies and from a smartphone, it can guide you to where you need to go, looking for different locations. So, these are, make up the mobility category.
Any comments on any of these? I was watching, I knew, our new Councilwoman Campbell had, had some comments.
So, I'm just, for the video surveillance, could you also include the video surveillance in all of our parks? Could that occur if we plan that correctly?
That, that could be part of one of the technologies to facilitate this category, yes.
Okay, and are you going to, I've seen the digit, I don't want to get too far ahead of you, I've seen the digital information kiosks in many cities that I have visited, and they are amazing, and they've got a blue button that if you need help, you just push, and it goes directly to the police department. And it's a wonderful safety feature, and, and I'd love to see things like that in our park, so that if we have an incident and they need help, they'll have a place to go, because in the park itself, we don't have an emergency button anywhere. And I'm saying in the park, but I mean, all of our parks, and we don't have that capability yet, but that would be something that I think would be very beneficial to our community. And, and we could obtain data from that to see if, in fact, it is a good way to measure how it's working.
Yes, we could.
Any other questions for Justin, continues? Go ahead.
Thank you. Next category is smart infrastructure for tomorrow. So, improve connectivity and access to wireless internet, expand public Wi-Fi access. A couple of examples of initiatives that we already have in place, such as the broadband study and the Bullard Tech Corridor study. What we're really looking at, how can we leverage our infrastructure as a city to, to support future city growth? So, from a technology perspective, whether that's through additional fiber conduits that we're laying for the future, or, again, as mentioned here, expansion of Wi-Fi.
Sherry?
I, I think that's a great goal, and I think in the last two years, we've seen how important it is to have good broadband and Wi-Fi available for everyone, and especially that I think the workplace has changed, that you're going to have people, a lot of people are able to work from anywhere, so I think that's important, that we work with our development community as well, to make sure that our communities are covered as well, and our businesses. So, thank you.
Any other?
Can I say one more thing?
Sure, one, that's where we're here.
Wally hasn't. I have gone to so many of these smart city presentations in the National League of Cities for the last seven, eight, nine years, and I've heard where some of the cities are very, very successful, and I've heard of some of the cities that have not been quite so successful because they don't have the money or the infrastructure in place to be able to do all that they would like to do. The, I, I like that you want to expand broadband of the Bullard Tech Corridor, but we still need to remember we do not have fiber optic available down Pebble Creek Parkway for all of our merchants that are in those shops there, and that's really critical, I think, if we can somehow tie that in for them as well, so that they're not using dial-up when I use my credit card in their store. And also, to expand the public access, I know of some cities who do have the Wi-Fi repeaters in their parks, and people actually go and study in the parks, and I don't know if we want to look into something like that, because that's an additional expense, but I think if you're planning anything to put, if you're going to put a service somewhere, maybe we can have a thought to look at what else can go in there for, at the same time, so there's just one expense or one cost or one, so we're not adding and adding and adding, if you know what I mean? Because that's when it, budgets usually get out of control, when we have to redo something that we didn't think, think it out enough. So, Mayor, I promise to be quiet.
The other? Continue, Justin.
Thank you, Mayor. The next category is smart economy, so technologies to improve services while saving time and money. I'll say this is the category that has the likelihood to touch every department across the city, including citizens, as well as our businesses. This is really, when you think about core technology support, this is where most of your efficiencies can be realized. And that's improved, but, you know, and it's realized through improved coordination and communication amongst our workforce, integration of systems, where you don't have siloed systems, as Councilmember Stitt referenced, even though we implement a solution, are we measuring how well that solution is performing? And if, and if we have to manually, back to automation of tasks, and this third point here, if we have to manually perform a workflow in one system and then print that off and go manually input that into another system, that's, that's huge inefficiency. And so, by integration and automation of systems, you really can identify efficiencies to be gained, and that's where technology can really, that's when it can become from a technology to a smart technology.
Any other questions? I have one more, so, my understanding is very short on some of these. So, as we're going to move to each of these items, does it can interfere with the activity, your daily activity? And I know that we've improved a great deal in all our departments for another program we have. So, now, we're doing this, is this anything that, you know, will bring them less timing? I mean, a slower delivery because of the change in, and, and being educated and learning and trying as you go along? Or is it one of those, it's like this, and they've got it, and incorporate it right away?
I, I think what you see as you implement technology is, is to a degree, you see both of those. In some situations, depending upon the technology and the impact, you may see an immediate efficiency gain. In other situations, where it may have much larger implementation and many more departments, as well as community engagement, those things, getting, facilitating that education to optimize those workflows sometimes takes time. And so, whenever you go, say, go live or implement a new technology, the first few weeks, you may experience a, a brief slowdown, but that pays dividends in the end, because as you become more efficient with the technology and continued service improvement of training and efficiency, then you actually gain, gain time back, and that's the goal. So, again, it's kind of both, some technology you can implement with relatively low impact, and then others, there's, there's a training period there, but after, after you go through that. But after, after you go through that, back to the point around data, you measure that and you measure, hey, we implemented this change in process. What were, did we truly meet the goal of that, of that intended change or not?
But teaching takes, the process takes time. And I do have one concern about how busy we are in the city. You know, we're sort of overwhelmed with people moving here and companies wanting to be. I just want to make sure that the pressure on staff doesn't lessen the efficiency that they've developed to this part, that, you know, so.
Absolutely. Any question?
Thank you.
I got a question.
We have more questions. Brandon? I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Is this hand in hand also with the lean or process improvement portion that the city's already doing?
Absolutely, it is. So, as we look at technologies, one of the things we look at is how we can engage with that continual service improvement approach that Lyman and HR lead. And there have been a few initiatives where it does go hand in hand. So, as we implement technology, as you encounter that change in the training of the process, we definitely look to, how can we partner with them? How can we leverage them to, to support this going forward?
Yeah. Because they have to be the, I mean, have to be where you get the initial pain point. They're, hopefully, they're communicating those to you and that's where you get the idea to eliminate that process. So, having their buy-in and getting where those processes can be improved. I'm sure the workforce will be the people that would tell you or at least give you that input to make it better. So, okay. That, it just makes sense that they go hand in hand, so.
I think you can continue now.
Okay. Thank you. The next category is community. So, technology to improve how we communicate and engage with our residents and businesses. A few examples, potential examples would be our customer service efficiency and experience, how we're improving our digital services and how we're proving our resident access to information. The concept of, we're not to data yet, but it, this does also segue into the, the conversation on open data. So, the information that we can make available to our community and to our, to our residents on a, on, on any basis. So, they can go pull information, look at our performance, drill into that data to understand it or have access to it from a business perspective to, to facilitate business-making decisions.
Anything? I think there's a positive statement right there. That sort of tells the story of why we'll go through the process. Because if, if I had to say anything, being a mayor and a councilperson, that customer service efficiency and experience and the improved digital services and all that information is just vital and that we are precise and we get to, you know, get it to our citizens to help them work through it. So, thank you.
The next category is a smart environment. So, using smart technology to improve our environment through the use of a few examples, maybe smart vehicles. I know that Javier has been in conversations as well, looking at the public EV stations, smart water technologies, improving energy use in our buildings, improving trash service efficiency through the use of technologies and, and such. So, as we look at how to, you know, just use smart technology to improve our overall approach to environment.
Any questions? Comments? Go ahead.
And our seventh and last category is smart data. And improve data sharing and use data analytics to inform decision-making. And this is really, this is really the, the crux of a lot of the smart city approach is how we use data for enterprise decision-making. Open data initiatives, not only how we use it internally, but how we make our data openly available for external use from either the citizens as well as businesses looking to do business with City of Goodyear. GIS data to make data accessible and actionable. Again, as, as you look at GIS data, so the mapping data and, and we're engaging businesses, how they can leverage that data to make informed decisions. And really, that's it, is how we can leverage data to really make those more informed decisions. There's also been a lot of conversations, and I'll use councilmember Stipp's example of the performance metrics, making those consistent and outwardly available and, and relevant so that you can look at it and it makes sense for anybody that's going to go access it. And it's not just a static PDF or a file out there. So, it's actually meaningful data.
The other? Bill?
You know, I, I, I think having, having that discussion about meaningful measurement somewhere in these needs to happen in order, you know, to get that moving forward. So, we aren't measuring things that don't matter. And that's why, you know, I use the term meaningful. And this may be the best place for that. So, thank you for the presentation.
Brandon?
Yeah. I mean, yeah. Making good use of the data and finding the right data and then acting upon it, I think, would be important. And then I had a question just around the, it might be in data also, but maybe with our water facility, I'm not sure. And a lot of places are going towards even putting more monitoring and Internet of Things on equipment so they can check for reliance and performance and vibration and how the, the failure rate and things like that. I'm not sure if we, if we're doing those kind of things, looking towards those kind of things. But just so we can make sure our equipment is, is going to stay operational and, and the maintenance can be done maybe ahead of time before it becomes a, a failure. So, I don't know. I just, yeah. You can do a lot of stuff with the data and, or at least how you find the data. And, yeah, it'd be a big, big project. So, so just make sure we're capturing that kind of things. So, thank you.
I, I will say that the proactive maintenance is something that we, we are capturing data and discussing. So, as we're bringing the new water treatment facility online, those are some of the technologies and the use, the use of that data that, that we're looking at leveraging and discussing, so.
Good. Thank you.
Laura?
Within these categories, is there an area that would anticipate and plan for impacts and maybe disruptions caused by big tech changes such as autonomous vehicles and things like that? I mean, again, this is my thought. You have to have an eye to what's going on and what's going to impact our city. I, I remember attending a smart city seminar at ASU and I took tons of notes. But the one thing I remember is, will you be ready when somebody drops off a fleet of autonomous taxis on your streets? And I thought, gosh, we just dealing with e-scooters, so probably not. So, I don't know. It's just one of those things. Are we looking and anticipating things that are going to impact us? And, and is there room somewhere in here for those?
So, if I can, thank you for that question. The seven categories that we proposed here, I believe, do encapsulate those technologies. The, but if there are other specific ones, we're definitely open to potentially adding, adding one or even changing one of the existing to, to better capture that. But I do believe the examples that we've proposed here today and the categories from the conversations that the team has been involved in, this captures, I believe, the essence of what's out there today. As technology changes, you know, that will be something that we have to always keep our, keep our ear to the ground for to hear. That's where those partnerships really play and help us with that. So, I do believe, specifically to reference the autonomous vehicle conversation, that does, that does fall into the environment category. And we have that outlined there as one. And, and, but it does help us, part of the master plan is to help us ensure that as those technologies come in and as those, whether it be a CIP or supplemental projects come in, we can look at those and we can say, does this make sense for us? Does this align with the, the master plan? And we can make that decision to support those initiatives or not, so.
I think you can go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. So, a quick, so that completes review of the categories. A quick review of the timeline. So, today, we're here to capture your input and feedback. So, I greatly appreciate, appreciate that. Between now and March, we, we will review the feedback, document the master plan with the plan of coming back in March to adopt the master plan. With, with these examples we mentioned today, as well as your input, we can go back and work on that master plan. And I know we've opened it up to input and throughout the presentation. But this is our last slide. So, I just wanted to pause here and see if there are additional categories or input or additional feedback that, that you all have for next steps. Thank you.
Any other comments on these two statements we were just saying? Okay. Are we finished with this?
We are finished. Thank you all very much.
First, Justin. Thank you very much. It was very informative. And I think a number of us really learned something from this. And I think that they've kind of expressed their feelings, too. So, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We have a spit, special meeting now following us. And so, no further business with this meeting. I adjourn this meeting.